Cross-country ninety-seven point four six three. Boys cross-country ninety-three point one one seven. Boys golf ninety point nine three nine. Girls tennis ninety-seven point four one one. Girls soccer ninety-five point five one four. Girls volleyball ninety-five point two nine two. And boys volleyball ninety-four point nine six four. These are our fall scholar athletes teams. Congratulations. Miller Hawkins Primary After School Character Club met last month. Last month and fifty-three kindergarteners through grade-two students participated. They worked on emergency food meal bags for Meals on Wheels, turkey crabs for the downstairs Scotty Thanksgiving baskets, and turkey cards for Meals on Wheels and recipients. Hastings Mallory Elementary served three hundred and seventy-seven lunches during their annual Thanksgiving luncheon on November twentieth. It was an amazing afternoon as parents and grandparents joined in for a wonderful holiday meal. A big thank you to former Board of Education member Linda House for connecting four of our students with the Divine Mercy Parish Thanksgiving gift giveaway. Also, Paul B. Moore Backpack Program was able to supply nine Thanksgiving meals to families of high school students that needed extra assistance. The turkeys and fixings were donated by the staff at Paul B. Moore. A thank you goes out to Margaret Woodard, Kelly Flack, Ellen Eldogrom for organizing and delivering the meals. Central Square Intermediate Students collected coins for UNICEF and donated five hundred dollars. Our fifth-grade Helping Hands Club, which is run by Debbie Graves, counted money raised for UNICEF, made Thanksgiving cards for soldiers, is in the process of making scarves and cards for soldiers that wore them for Christmas. They are also making blankets for the Yalasama Children's Hospital. Fifth-grade Leadership Students from Brewerton Elementary came back from the conference filled with energy and ideas on how to help Brewerton reach their food fight goal. Congratulations to Paul B. Moore High School Science Teacher Gina Dougleby in making the next phase of the Master Teacher Program, which is in the interview stage. This is a huge accomplishment and we wish her the very best of luck. Central Square School had Kent Arthur Flower Assembly, which taught three hundred and six graders the art, science, and mathematics behind making bread. After the assembly, over one hundred and sixty loaves of homemade bread were donated to the food pantries in Brewerton and full with additional loaves being passed on to the Syracuse Rescue Mission. Thank you to Mr. Edgar and his eighth-grade Social Studies Students. Central Square Middle School recently highlighted on a nationwide website. Flow Cabulary is a highly engaging site that creates rap songs about educational topics and current events. The competition was to create the ultimate dream house. Several students submitted entries, but Jimmy Reynolds went above and beyond creating a dream house that amazed the Flow Cab crew. His Boston Red Sox theme, oh, you like that, Mr. McCarthy? Boston Red Sox floor plan they picked up for the high school honor of being this week's shout-out contest winner. Congratulations to the following Central Square Middle School winners from the twenty-two round spelling bee. Again, congratulations. First place, Jessica Georges. Second place, Emily Fellows. And third place, Ally Fortercott. The male staff members of A E Co. participated in the No Shave November in an effort to raise cancer awareness and help fund the fight to beat this disease. All males in the building pledged not to shave during the month of November. Students, parents, and staff and community members were asked to donate money to their favorite beard. This initiative raised over three hundred and thirty-five dollars for the American Cancer Society. Thank you to everyone who participated and donated for this worthwhile cause. I would also like to remind the Board of Education that the advocacy campaign workshop will be held Thursday, December eleventh, six-thirty to eight-thirty in the auditorium at Marcellus High School. This workshop is for everyone. There is no charge. This is a special workshop, how to create and carry out effective community advocacy support for our schools, our children, and our future. Please let her know if you're interested. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McNair. Next time on our agenda is open in the board forum. One blue card. This is Valerie Hayley talking about possible addition of a CSI for the grade-ten. Try to make it two minutes. It'll be wonderful. Thank you.
My daughter's class has twenty-seven students. We started with twenty-seven, had twenty-six for a short time, and are now back to twenty-seven. I am still confused as to why at the end of last school year, a fifth-grade teacher was moved to fourth grade when the fourth grade had fewer students. If it was to ease the stress of the fourth-grade teachers from having such a large class last year, I can understand, but that is not fair to the current fifth-grade teachers who will now have the same challenges as last year's fourth-grade teachers, and it is certainly not fair to the hundred-plus fifth graders who dealt with oversized classrooms last year. Please come visit a classroom of twenty-seven versus eighteen to twenty students. If you don't think there is much difference, I assure you there is a big difference. Again, I ask that you give these fifth-grade teachers and students some relief and add another teacher as soon as possible, and for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hayley. Board forum, is there anybody that has something that they'd like to bring up at this time?
I just have a couple things. One of them is, Miss Morlick for Joe, just general question. Consistencies among policies and procedures in all of our buildings. Like, for example, when something is to be mailed out, does it go out direct? Does a building have autonomy to have direct mailings from their building without going through the district office first?
Usually it goes through the building administration. If they have questions, they contact us.
Okay. And I only ask that because there's things, I mean, as board members, our names are on there, they're on the company, they're on the airheads. There's been things that have went out of just a reason that have spellings down, typos, grammatical errors. And not that I don't know that, I just want to sort of call it the things that should go through your office first, or if they're just simply, do we even know what's being sent out in one business? And I know that this can't be copied and everything, but would it be possible that maybe like once a month or at board meetings, we could at least get like a correspondence folder of things that went out so that we know what's been sent out on Monday?
Excellent.
And also so that if we're out someplace, somebody asks us, we know that it wasn't what it was sent out. Because sometimes it seems like things go in elementary schools as well, that don't necessarily come to everybody. I want to go back to, we talked about last meeting, two weeks ago too, about, and I didn't really get a sense of where the board felt about this, but I really think it's important to be having some dialogue with the next layer of our district, which happens to be our students that protect our schools. I brought up to you guys last time about some different school districts that actually go in and sit down with, like the senior lunches, the junior lunches, middle school lunches, just kind of hear what's going on with the kids, what are they saying, what are the parents saying, what is, you know, kind of take a pulse or feel for what's going on. Because even after the board meeting we had last week, and there was a group of eighth grader boys that were here, and I know that they're not here tonight, but I commend them for coming last time, and despite all the dialogue and conversation we had during the board meeting, afterwards in the hallway, I had like just a genuine awkward conversation with them and learned about four things that probably were different than what was said to us when we had the meeting. And not that I think that that's, you always take it like the way it is, but I think there's two sides to every story. I think we really need to make sure that we're getting everything that's happening. I think, and if anything, you know, what you're getting it from the perspective of the people that are receiving the services and are the customers of the district, that we would at least get a better sense of, you know, what's going on and what's being, what's being said. So I, again, I just wanted to take a pulse to see what you guys think about that. I mean, I really want to implement something like that. And I don't know what that takes to do that. Maybe we just, I just want to come into the school and say, can I come to the senior lunch? I mean, with senior leadership, do I need with the coachman? And how do you do that?
Yeah, are you suggesting it be something formal?
No, something very informal, actually.
Something that's scheduled?
Well, I'd like to schedule it, because I don't want to just like plot down every thing and be like, hey, come in, what's going on? You know, I'd rather more or less say, hey, can we meet with the senior class? Can we meet during this, you know, hey, the board of education is going to be in here today, something you want to talk about, something that you feel is, you know, burning question, something that you think you need. They're going to be here during lunch today, you want to come sit down or chat? I mean, very informal.
What I can say is, give me a chance to look at the list and see what other districts have done.
Yeah. I'll pass to the districts that are doing it. And the board of educations that are also doing that. And then the other question that I've had, and while the eighth-grade principal is here, is what is the status of the eighth-grade trip? From the onset about two weeks ago?
We received information from the tour company today. I got that lead in the second room. We'll be looking through it and getting something out to everybody in the next couple days.
Something else, though, in the sense of the trip's going to happen, the price?
I would love the trip. I would like the trip to happen. Yes, that's correct.
So we can get parents to get off board because they're planning and they're going to actually participate? And will you also include the use of the arts with ads funds?
That's correct.
And how that will offset the cost?
That's correct.
All right. May it be by the end of the week? Is that unfair?
Yes.
I just wanted to, I talked with Joe a little bit about this over the weekend. I want to revise our safety policy in regards to how each elementary building is handling parents coming in and out of the building. I know that one building in particular is very strict, and then we have a couple of our other elementary buildings that are not so strict. And since, you know, you see all the issues that are happening from day to day, I just think that we need a district-wide strict policy that every elementary building is following the same policy.
I think our plan is sufficient. I think we need to revisit it to be sure that it's being followed.
Right. Okay.
And we will do that. Come on.
Okay. Okay, good. Because that goes back to my whole point about the policies, that I think there's some things that people feel the need to reach out and try to do things that are happening at their school and aren't happening at other schools, and like you said, there's some strictness, and then there's some ones that aren't happening. And ideally, we know what's the policy is. It's just a matter of how much is being enforced and what, and where it's being. Not so much, though, but opening is also likely in those places where it's happening.
And what I would say, again, as I said all along, if there's a situation that arises or you hear something, give me a call.
I'll pass this to you, so you're fully aware.
Anybody else?
I just wanted to give a little sense of feedback. And it's not applicable tonight, and it may not be a lot of the meeting, but especially when we're meeting in our elementary schools, when you have students that are going to be part of the presentation, how do you, would you all feel if we moved their presentation ahead of the open in the board forum? In case it were a night when we had more than one or two speakers, or, you know, sometimes we get going here ourselves and can extend things, and it just seemed to me that perhaps on a night, especially when elementary kids would be involved in the presentation, that maybe perhaps we put that presentation ahead of the open in the board forum?
Absolutely.
I think that's a great idea. I would recommend.
Okay. Very good. There's nothing else for the board forum, then let's move on, please, to the reports to the Board of Education. And Mr. McCarthy, do you have the building rapport here?
I have not. It wasn't last year.
Here you are.
I guess not like.
Well, would you like to introduce our first topic?
Sure.
Education here?
I don't think you guys are strangers to the people or to what we do. Well, this is middle school. Tonight we're going to spotlight on reading program here at the middle school. And I believe that all three of our administrators are presenting. Jenick, Tenrod.
Good evening. I want to welcome you to Central Square Middle School on Connie Bell Line. I'd like to begin our presentation tonight, recognizing some of our staff that's here with us, if anyone's up. Good evening. Jenica Pass. Psychologist and instructional coach, Amy Ogleson, and administrative intern, Jennifer Simony. And our subject area specialist for ELA. And I believe that's it. Now I need to realize all of that.
Most of you, I assume all of you understand that this year we have the vision statements, and he highlighted the personal increase in the instructional level in our schools tonight for your viewing pleasure.
We're not going to read too many of the slides to you. There's some definitions in there that you have glossary that was included if you want to look up what some of the, some of the tests mean, some of the word and that sort of stuff. I mean, I take a lot of time. Didn't want to take a lot of time by explaining that sort of stuff to you. We, every year, we look at data and what the data has shown, shows a lot of, and one of the things it's pointed to very obviously is, if students can't access the content, they're going to struggle in the, in the subject areas. And one of the places where they struggle most is reading, reading at the grade level. That's especially true of our students with disabilities. So last year, we, like we've every year, looked at our AIS program and made some changes there, as well as looked at how we were addressing reading specifically for those students and students with disabilities. And we've got our goals to focus to improve the reading levels for everybody, for at least here, and use research-based interventions, not just, oh, we think this is working, or we think this isn't working, but actually look at that and research. And then, and then us do some different changes in our.
All right. So here we have, you know, five whole areas. Research, research shows that just twenty minutes a day spent reading with a child brings that person, of course, you know, drawing, developing critical reading skills. We come over here, reading's the most important subject in school. Now, we can debate that. The issue is, we know that really kids need to learn how to read, because there's so many different things in our society. Down over here, children spend nine hundred hours a year in school, seventy, eight hundred hours at home. Right here, about half of the literate adults live in poverty, they're less likely to find employment, and they're more literate counterparts. And finally, across the world, children who read the most read the best.
Most carefully with the term AIS, we actually have intervention services. At the middle school level, we have both ELA reading now, but we're just going to focus on the reading in ELA academic intervention. There are several ways a student can receive this supplemental service. One is by state regulation if they score a level one under New York State assessment. However, the state has also encouraged us to use a multiple data point formula to bring students in and out. So right on the website, if you go on, you know, on your curriculum instruction, academic intervention services, you can see the actual entrance and exit criteria. We also go over that for the parents, so they know how students can receive these services. So for ELA, for example, STAR testing. STAR is a data tool that we use, diagnostic, it determines students' academic levels in various areas of ELA reading. So this would be the criteria that we would use, how a student would actually access these services. We also have another measurement tool called Suastic Rating Inventory. That determines their actual grade level, or what we call a lexile level. So if you, let's say you have a lexile level of a thousand, that means you're just barely basic in sixth grade. So anybody that's got below a thousand means they're not reading on their chronological grade level, and they would require a service. We also use teacher recommendation to decide whether they're going to enter or exit. They need two points to exit. They have to meet two of the criteria. So that just sums that up. There is more information on it, right on the website, that you may or may not have read in the past.
What you're going to see is a couple of video clips. Three of them have to do with System 44, and one of them has to do with guided reading. What was interesting was, I just picked a day, and I went around, teacher, students didn't know. I welcome you anytime to come in and pop into any of these classes, most of them are during third period, just to see what's going on. Okay?
This is one of the System 44 classrooms. There's no audio, you can see the students are on computers. System 44 is partially based on computer data intervention, but then you have students with a teacher who are doing some direct teacher-led intervention at the same time. So the student, the teachers have a couple different stations going on in the classroom at the same time for System 44.
Are these, just follow your proper, are these the kids who are fifteen to one reading level?
Those, those students, System 44 is fifteen to one.
Yeah, you didn't mean that. Two out of three are tied with.
Yeah. And here is some.
Actually, she just said not AIS.
Oh, not AIS.
Students with disabilities, and these are, even students that are performing in lower.
Okay, you just don't know how you.
Correct. And here's the criteria for that. You, thank you. You just.
If you're fifteen to one advanced grade, you, you are a low-level one or two student on the state assessment. You are identified as a student with disability, and you have an SRI or STAR, so most likely that are fifteen that are delayed by fifty percent. So we've got a double, or you're an eighth grader reading, a third grader below level, or a sixth grader reading, a third grader below. So we've got our struggling readers overall, and then our most struggling readers are fifteen to one advanced classes, students with disabilities, and then the students that are in AIS, that are slightly above that. We also look at previous record failure, and these students are students who are expected to take the New York State assessment, and have to cooperate in certain.
So we have two different programs for these thirteen-one classes. We have System 44, and we have guided reading. System 44 is new to us as something that I kind of tripped on, brought in some other people, we took a look, took a look at, we heard that it had some really great results. What this particular system, it's a computer-based system, as Matt said, but its focus is explicit instruction and comprehension and writing skills while incorporating learning progressions. Learning progressions, and the reason that it's computerized is, if, let's say, you're the one taking the test, the learning progressions are going to be based on what you answered and how you get it right. So it will automatically adjust to you as it goes. So it's, you know, we try to do it individualized, like you do in guided reading. This is even more individualized. It's individualized based on what you do right hand and there. And that's where the core progressions go forward. Guided reading.
I mean, I guess you won't use the short time, and we still have that.
On, you're going to see great stuff.
Hold that question.
You're going to see great stuff. So guided reading is not computerized, and it's small group instruction based on that other data that we send. So teachers work in a small group, reading if the student's independent reading level, or instructional reading level versus their chronological reading level. Then they have some other sessions, we call it, where they would focus on some gap skills, fluency, coding, vocabulary, word work. They're both good programs. We've used guided reading in this district for many years. System 44 is, you know, you're going to see what we've seen so far between the two.
I'm going to play a short video, video showing guided reading. You'll notice they're a little bit different. There's so many parts of this, but I thought this would be pretty cool. This is called a tubulu. And if any of you have ever gone in to visit through the years in classrooms, often kids will be reading aloud, and you go in and you listen, and it's pretty loud, and just join in, this type of thing. This is one of the neat devices, and kids can actually, and you're going to see one student, again, very quietly, and this really amplifies their voice, will be able to listen to themselves. And there's a lot they gain from that. So I just thought, have they been a second course? You know, but if you want to.
Much respect. You're so bad.
So here we have some students working on vocabulary program. These, these kids right here are working on some independent. Again, we're trying to individualize instruction as best we can. And again, I just popped in. These kids are playing Scrabble. Hmm. Yeah. I mean, use your words. There's the tubulu. Right there. And you, and like I said, you could have picked it out. This student was at a different level, working on some independent, as this student will. And then, of course, the teacher is over and working with small group students. They have something called WIP, which is called Work in Progress, and that I have on the wall. Every day, every week, the kids rotate into the different centers. And the teacher bases it on their, basically their star school, and notices the kids that excel, they then get changed to a different group, kids maybe that are going backwards, and then they get the chance to work on those individual skills during the process. This happens at sixth grade for all the kids, guided reading.
And this is just to point out that guided reading and System 44 has some similarities. Daily, daily use for both of them, we change the schedule to allow these students, for daily use for our most needy students. The ones that are in AIS are probably just taking that every day for the most needy students, whether they're in System 44 or guided reading, fifteen to one classes. Every day, there is a whole group instruction, there is small group differential instruction. There's more, much more technology base in the System 44 class, but also consistent modeling and independent reading. And there's sixty-three students in those classes of actually this, like, you know, five, there's a whole section, there's a couple of six, seven, eight, eight grader. But there's many similarities, the model, the same thing, when you play, a whole, a small, whole construction before the students split off into stations, and different things, many of which are very similar with the 314 technology.
And this is the final video, but again, this was that one period I happened to pop through. Actually.
You learn how to bed videos in PowerPoint straight from.
The thing that you just focus on, just a short period of time, is the kids are engaged in what they're doing. And then you'll see, again, you'll see the teacher having an opportunity, because people are going to say, well, what about the teacher? But the teacher has an opportunity to do a little bit of one-on-one, which is really life.
And everything the kid's doing is reported. So it's not like they're just working independently, and you hope to God that they're doing what they're supposed to do. You can then, as a teacher, go back and take a look at, what are they doing, what are they getting right, what are they not getting right? And again, follows with the core progressions.
This is just really the pyramid. You start here, and it just basically shows. In sixth grade, all the kids receive reading. In grade seven and eight, it's incorporated in parts of the ELA. We have seventy percent of our population, right now seventy percent, are getting AIS reading. And then, of course, we have sixty-three kids who are basically embedded in the fifteen to one program.
Paul, you, this is my first opinion, you may have some studies that have confidence in getting that, because you know, and I think reading stuff in sixth grade is not eighth grade more appropriate. Do you think that impacts the kids' development, you know, kind of reading class in seventh, eighth grade, where you're like getting that guided reading and being better sports for me, or?
Look, you know what? I'll say, yes. And more so than ever. Let's face it, there's so many things out there. The kids are involved, and I'm talking, you know, a lot of the technology and this kind of thing. And again, I think they spend a lot more time doing that than they do in reading. So you can see, of course, we're, we're focusing on it, because we're taking over a lot of that role, I think. And I don't need to point fingers, but.
No, I would love to.
Well, we love associate, because we test the kids coming in, we've done it the last couple of years, so they're tested in. For. So they're tested in, or determine whether or not what their reading levels are. We've been doing it every year. So now we use two different tools, which we found are consistently showing us the same thing. Unfortunately, one of the things we see is in some grade levels, there are kind of over seventy percent of the kids coming in reading off grade level. But they're, we're not carrying them in seven, we're not carrying them in eight either because we currently, other than AIS. AIS was scale-based, but we would work on things from the classroom. Now we're working on actual reading strategies that both come to determine, like help you do your homeworks. But that's not gonna teach you the basic foundational skills you need to be able to read and comprehend. So we, we changed our focus.
And it's, it's kind of a mixed bag. It's, you know, you need to work on those fundamental skills, but just because I give you vocabulary in this doesn't mean you know vocabulary words. You have to be able to use them in context, with grade level content at the same time. So it's really two pieces of puzzle that have to be happening at the same time.
Well, we can see at the board level in nine, in high school now, they've implemented this, and for AIS, additional resources for kids that are causing reading level or not. So these would be, but it sounds like it's almost cyclical because you're getting on one level, grade level, and then you're driving parts of your readers to your grade levels, which is definitely-
Right.
Challenging.
And so you'll, you'll see through our presentation, and one of the things we're gonna show you is what is our goal, or our attempt to address that so we can push that forward. And exit with a goal.
If you can get that one issue here, are you talking about eighth grade, they're making grade readers, twenty?
Right, right. Uh, these are just some of the typical growth reports that we, we take a look at. And we meet with each AIS teacher, everyone, I mean, with each one of them. We go over this, this is a growth chart of a particular student. So the star that you see is what this company, this STAR says. Uh, the STAR says proficient for that grade level, based on New York State. So a student that reaches that scale score should also demonstrate proficiency on a New York State, on the more assessment, should. And what we saw last year when we pulled results from the state assessments, it was a great correlation puller. It was like seventy, seventy-seven percent did not. And then what we had to take into account, we had a lot of students fifteen times. So, so what you wanna see is trend line that goes up. Those little blue scores, little blue cross sign, indicate a student's performance. Now, you see a student's trend line going up, which you want to see is the student is gonna make proficiency before the end of next year. So that should happen. The one before that is that if the student continues at that particular grade, then by December, they would get proficiency. And then what they could do is exit AIS. Because the goal is they shouldn't be there for other.
Right, right.
Well, this is scale, and then move them way down. Excellent, excellent. This is not what you wanna see. This is a reverse trend line. What this, this report would tell us is the student came in for a particular scale score, I think that's around six hundred.
I should watch about eight.
He's moving it. He knows I am, we're gonna go, so he's just gonna, ooh, little red dot.
There is no little red dot, but red dot is what I'm looking for.
Exactly, he goes them all day long. Alright, so as you can see, this student's going down. What that tells us and tells the teacher is the interventions that you have in place are not effective. You have to reevaluate. You go back to the diagnostic report, which we don't have here, that says Trina Hall cannot do this, she can't do this, she should go and do this in the fourth grade level, she should go and do this in the third grade level. And then you recreate different learning progressions to address those. These are not what we wanna see, but we can see some.
The block, you have four blue blocks, three of them going down. Correct, exactly.
The scale scores, uh, score.
Yep.
So the teacher draws that line for you, right, so that's correct.
Yep.
And with those four blocks that are looking at right there, that one score of six hundreds, that has that student going all the way down.
Yes.
Right.
At this point, you're talking-
At this point, yeah.
But you see, other two are still going in where they started. So what you wanna say is, okay, and again, what happens is you take the test and it says, okay, you can do this. Just a little bit hard one. If you can't do it, it's gonna drop you back down. And that's, it's gonna progress that way. It's gonna respond to whatever you do.
And the other thing you may notice is that these two, these two tests are at about the same point in time. When the teacher sees this-
Don't look at, show me right back.
When the teacher sees this, so far below the first two, says, Johnny, did you really try on the test this time?
Right.
And you remember, we talked about your goals and what you were gonna work on, and I know you've worked hard in this class. And they re, what happened here, and sometimes students will retake the assessment and then bring those things or better. Cause they were having a bad day or they were frustrated or any number of these things.
Six minutes taking this, did you spend with the average, just about seventeen, taking it? You can check a lot of different things, whereas before, you just kind of went with it until the end of the test instead.
Yeah, we did.
Oops.
Do you guys, do you guys think that kind of student who by these numbers is like a sixth grade reading level, that's in August or, I'm sorry? And kind of maintain that level there by these numbers? Um, do you think the student is not going on the reading form, but like on top of like, how are they performing in math? How are they performing in science and-
Actually, what you said, you hit the nail on the head. The first thing we really do is we compare it to their, their score in the classroom. And we look for, you know, because you look at this, you might see somebody who's beginning to struggle.
Right.
And we're not saying that this student was an AIS student, but maybe if we see a continued downward growth, maybe somebody who might-
Well, if it's eighth grade student with less than a sixth grade level, that is there.
I hope you, I hope you're seeing.
That is there, right. And the other thing which we wanna look at is, does that compare with SRI? Now, we progress monitor every two, three, four weeks, so we're constantly rechecking. But what we're doing now is we're monitoring so much sooner so we know what you're teaching, what you're throwing in that patch, and so it grows up. Any more questions on those? Like, here's really good news.
Um, training is about results. Uh, what we give is very preliminary, okay? And we've changed our AIS model measure, we have reading in our AIS, uh, classes. And we've got fifteen to one reading enhanced classes, whether you're in System 44 or guided reading, depending which level of students they have. Last year, from September to November, uh, the students grew in a point two six. Now, what's a point two six mean? A point two six means in this time period, from September to November last year, they grew two months and six days worth of reading growth. This year, the students who grew on point three eight were three months, eight days. So we're seeing over more, over one more month's worth of growth for all of our AIS kids from last year to this year.
Same timeframe.
Same timeframe.
Same student, potentially, either.
Well, not, not all the same students, because remember the eighth grader, now ninth grade, sixth. So everybody's pumped up in here, but this is for all of our AIS. And it's very preliminary, I mean, it says two months worth of data, which just maybe over the summer, he didn't read anything, and now he just read three books. And, but it should have been the same, similar last year, but there's definitely a change there for one year. Uh, this is a comparison of all kids that are in fifteen to one enhanced reading classes. Uh, all of them, it says all fifteen one, have grown to two months and eight days. Again, that's our most struggling careers combined in guided reading and System 44. The ones who were in System 44 are actually grown three months and seven days through the System 44 intervention. What's, it's early to say, oh, this is the miracle, but we found it, there is a miracle, besides hard work. All, we really were delayed in implementing System 44 as teachers learned the program and got over some tech, technical glitches. So that's data for the first three months of school, it's really only about a month, I have eight, two months of the System 44 intervention. But it's definitely showing gains for our students in the past that have made gains, or certainly not significant gains like that. Okay. This is, it's gonna blow my mind, you're gonna claim. Our fifteen to one reading students from thirteen to fourteen, fourteen to fifteen. So if you're in that class this year, um, and wouldn't have been last year had the class existed, this is the growth they made. Most of them were just in AIS class last year, or possibly resource or something along those lines. But not a specific, every day, any intervention reading class. And again, not quite two months worth of difference in growth over two months in the first year. We have doubled our, but we're getting closer to that, uh, for those students that are in System 44, fifteen to one, uh, classes. So, uh, good things happening there, and we're very excited about them for our lowest level of strength reading.
This is our final System 44 class. A couple of teachers working this forward. And this is the support we've offered for guided reading, okay? This is all in sixth grade again, uh, for the staff, guided reading, professional development. PLCs and I apologize, you've heard of professional learning communities. We started that new this year in middle school. We have our entire staff working on their own goals, pretty interested. And we also have some PLCs particularly for our guided reading staff. Goal setting meetings, Connie runs them for ELA and I run them for math. And we basically do the same kind of thing, different content areas. And we have alternative ones as well, to make sure we, try to keep everybody out of the wall. And then for the fifteen one enhanced, we had that System 44 training and coaching, also PLCs in System 44. And we also had some site visits at Bartlett. You see in the video, it was a site visit.
Alright, so this is, uh, where we ask ourselves, what's our next step? We know where we've been, we know what we're doing right now, we know where we wanna go. Uh, again, we wanna focus on expanding our System 44 downward, as I said. The goal is, I mean, System 44 really doesn't address anybody above the second grade, right? We just say second grade reading level, where you're going.
Yes.
So all the kids in that are reading at best in second grade, and they might be eighth graders. So what we wanna do is-
Sure. Sure, right?
Yep.
System 44 is addressing, he's a middle school.
Second grade or below.
Second grade or below level.
Sure.
There, there may be some kids a little bit higher than that, maybe they're up or really, there's a lower level intervention for them if they're-
So, so our goal is using this program, and like I said, the research that we did on it, we, we went to different school districts, we did, we did our homework. What we're being told is you're gonna get, you know, your goal of like, is to get one year's growth in one year's time. But if you're already kind of grade levels behind, where you go with that. So we are looking to this program to walk this path, we take these kids more than a year. But if they follow like Matt just showed, a point four, one, whatever you're showing. If that keeps up, we're gonna get there. The goal is, we're gonna grow out of System 44. We already have some kids growing out of System 44 because they're going above the second grade level. The next step is something called REAP one eighty. What we're hoping is, we'll be using REAP one eighty to address third, fourth, fifth grade, sixth grade levels here. And we'll take purchase of those System 44s, and they'll go down to lower grades. So is that gonna happen today? But that is the goal, that is the plan. This is a long-term plan of ours, it's not just what we're gonna do today, go about tomorrow. We know that something's gonna be done over time. So, you know, what else can we bring in? We've got additional coaching. The person from System 44 has been here three times, is coming in again, uh, very kindly. We are increasing our library of guided reading materials. What that means is more books for kids at their reading level. Cause you can't practice at a reading level, really only reading in third grade, so it's not gonna be that. So we, this is what we're doing, this is how we're allocating our resources. We're really focusing on this, it is, we're driven, and we're going in this direction. Um, we're progress monitoring much more closely than we ever have before using these different tools. We're working with the teachers monthly, telling them, we're working with you now, working with the kids, and everybody's talking about it. So it's more communication than I think I've seen, you know, very long time. Uh, fifteen to one reading enhanced, we're gonna continue to do the same things, we're hoping. Why don't we have everybody in fifteen, System 44? I can't believe nobody's asking that, I was expecting you all to-
My question, what do you mean here? I mean, you're, you've got a physical date of birth, what do we see? Is this continuing on, if you're in System 44, I'm sure it's in System 44 in fifth grade?
There's not, you're the only building that has it right now. It is a cost tool.
So you're taking kids in sixth grade who are potentially reading at a second grade level?
Fourth, first, fourth, quarter.
Or kindergarten or fifth grade? And if you have three years, potentially getting them home grade up. Um, but, you know, again, our work depends on how much they want and twelve, what's going to happen to them in their ability. And then, yeah, this is like a middle, this is, I feel like this tool is a fantastic tool, but are we using it at the right time? And are we using it?
We're starting it right now. Like I said, our goal is to put it lower, but it's, it's, it's a cost tool.
Great question, why? Yeah, that was my question, you know, what do you need from, from us to do this, I mean, that is-
Really big, big sale.
Big, big sale.
This was our first year.
So first year was that first year with it? What is he, you know, isn't, they're gonna tell you, they're not gonna call us for last because they're gonna go, oh, it's really not that good. They're gonna tell us, you're gonna get two years growth, two point four years growth. We're testing it.
What I'm getting, like, if you're already getting four months and eight days growth in two months, really not even like, all the days that we're not here, you're getting like, it's like a real sixty day window of, of school.
Right now, it's working good.
That's impressive.
Right now, it looks good. But again, so everything looks good, yeah. So we're, I think we're very optimistic, but with caution, please, good day.
Alright. But what is the cost of this stuff, like, what is, like, is it costly with this?
Up to five thousand dollars.
For sixty students.
For sixty students? That potentially right now are reading four grades below where they should be? And you have to really bring them up to where they're going to be.
Well, closer to where they should be. I mean, it, it's kind of saying, many of them are right now, let's say, reading in second grade level. Then, but by the time they hit ninth grade, maybe in a year or two, they will not be top school level. But as, uh, I think, uh, last month or this summer, the board approved a new course, the high school reading.
That's a fourth time, yeah.
Yep, so the high school is also being proactive in terms of some of the, some of the students that are off level readers. And trying to keep that growth going, because we don't have a system for readers, the middle school does. Uh, like Connie said, the vision for this is to take some of the needy students, address them as much as we can here in the middle school. But then slowly start to bring it down, so read down to sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Next year, it might be fifth, sixth, and seventh. And then something that's gonna take them to the next level, that's for, uh, System 44, um, a, and keep that reading and that progress going. And then eventually, a lot of this intensive support from the middle school is doing, hopefully will be done at the elementary level. With some, with some of our needy students, because they're already doing a lot as it is at the elementary level. That they're gonna be closer to being on grade level readers and they get to the middle school eventually.
I'm treating, they're not in System 44, the elementary schools and multiple kids programs that are in place. They have a program on it. Low grade level.
Yeah, the part of it is, and this is where the middle school administrator did a really nice job of, uh, being creative with it. Is the amount of time that you get with one student, one time to really work on this. A lot of these at the elementary level, there's a-
LLIs.
LLIs, but I can't remember what it stands for, level literacy?
Level literacy intervention.
It, they need sixty to ninety minutes a day to be working on it. The middle school doesn't have that, and the schedules remain as creative as they can with it. So the elementary is doing it a different way to address these issues.
Right, and I can see where you could fit it, the schedule there is more inclusive than you could here, but I'm even projecting a little further than my frame. We're trying to be available, it takes minutes on a ninth grade, tenth grade schedule, it's even tougher to get into. I feel like bringing these kids up to a point where it's like-
With the students that we're talking about, it is in chat, art sometimes, because with the fifteen to one students are our special ed, students with disability. So with block scheduling to high school, doing eighty, eighty-two minutes, they might be able to have one block dedicated just to them. So it may actually be easier to high school, maybe some of these.
High school's definitely been in communication with us and trying to make that magnitude of consistency. Um, work communication with the elementary, because, you know, we have the LLIs, we know what's going on there. And I, as I said, this is, I think, probably the most aligned, I've been here for ten years, this is probably the most aligned I've seen reading in such a square over the last two years. So we, we're raising systemic, it's not gonna be here this year or next year. One thing I can say is, if we're allowed- And one thing I can say is, if we're allowed to keep going for this, and we're able to find the resources to continue with it, they will certainly graduate much higher, with much higher reading level than they have previously. And maybe we can reduce the drop rates, because a lot of those kids, they give up.
Well, we need, it's, I mean, and it's so, we know very well the way you, that I certainly look at first life, first critical skill you possibly have. But at the same day, it goes to them being able to do math, to be able to do a language, to be able to, you know...
You can't read, you can't do a lot of everything.
Correct, and you pull yourself out of that, and you can't read, you pull yourself out of that in by group events, and it's a huge disadvantage for kids. And that's why I feel like that's fifty-five thousand dollars, well, that's, that's an investment that you're making in something that's more than, you know, stop. I'd rather, I'd rather talk about something like that than, um, something else.
It's important that we get longer-term data too, though, I mean, with respect, I mean, this is, this is two months, so it's good stuff, but, you know, we really gotta...
Before we turn it around, everybody, it's about three hundred thousand, they still...
No, I agree, but the long-term, yeah, when I see something, it's something that kids are in AIS, but that to me is like a big number.
And that's been around, that number's been around.
Right, and that number is just, it's been around a long time, and it's not really changing, correct?
Two, three, four, five percent points, but...
Correct.
Alright, so that was the intense part.
Um, before I, before I go on...
Before we go on our twelve-minute presentation.
Yes. Exclusive questions, exclusive questions, a discussion. Um, the three people that are here in attendance, uh, this is Smalling, this is Kaskowski, and Mrs. Alves, uh, really put a lot of time into working on this, uh, as far as changing and continuing with services along with Ross, and really trying to find a way to add more of this reading intervention time to these students. And their work has really been instrumental in getting stuff going on, and we really appreciate their hard work and everything that happened. Um, and we really wanted to highlight some instructional stuff that was going on in middle school, because it's good stuff, it's exciting stuff, and preliminary things say, we're going in the right direction, and that's very exciting. But there's a lot more to this, and we wanted to take a minute to highlight that. Uh, one of the things, we've got a dresser guidance counselor, Mr. Heesker, today. Uh, we did, actually, Mr. Menard already talked about this, King Arthur Power came to give a presentation, uh, and we had our, about three hundred sixth graders, almost two-thirds of them brought back a little bread and donated, uh, a group of chairs, it was fantastic. Really, so, I am looking for chairs from ways in and roles, but you're from the King Arthur presentation, I can deliver that. Well, Mr. Shang, just to go down and talk about some of the other things we do and have done over the years.
Alright, yeah, so this is, this is the, wait, there's more. Um, and a lot of this is stuff from last year, but we're anticipating this year, you know, we have the annual lock-in supportive wish in the building last year, Tom LaFaye, one of our PE teachers, his wife is dealing with cancer, the kids decided to donate the funds to that family. We had a food drive last year, we're anticipating, we're gonna create effort this year, last year, sixty-three hundred items from the middle school. Coke drive last year, eight bags, big bags. Uh, we have a brand new setup, just introduced today at our faculty meeting, one school, one book initiative, we're gonna be reading the novel Wonder, and we're trying to get everybody within the building, everybody. Adopt a board members as well, to read Wonder. Alright. Uh, we have a secret luncheon that goes on here in Maine, we had the spelling bee we talked about, we have our concerts and our band, our kids are involved, we have our fun nights. During Veterans Day, we had a tradition of acknowledging our staff members, and they come down and do the pledge, and this year it was Mr. Jim Edick, who's not here today, he was in the army. Uh, Cindy Boz, who's one of our tech people, Jack, uh, Ed Dar, who's one of our eighth grade social studies teachers, and who else? Uh, Brian Hatch is one of our eighth grade math teachers, came down and did the pledge for the kids. Homecoming Spirit Week, you know, if you're out there, we always put a club together, we're out there to win our best champions of choice. Mark Marrow's coming in a couple of weeks, uh, a positive choice is gonna be, the kids are gonna be going up to the high school. Our drama club production every spring, Camp Hollis team building this year, John Dow, Lost Boys, has come to spoken, what, two or three years in a row now? Marion Blumenthal, as you know, is a heart, you may not know, Holocaust survivor, comes every year for about eight or nine years now, speaking to our eighth graders. And we have a five hundred dollar donation to the Wounded Warriors, she wears some jeans, paid five dollars, and raised about a hundred dollars.
You have the staff in there, I thought that was amazing for this high staff, five hundred dollars.
It, it's hard to not look when you go through the hallways and just see the, you know, the anti-bullying, we know what a big issue that is, and we're trying to be so proactive. Uh, we have our positive behavior referrals, and some of you have come to, last year we had almost seventy kids and their families invited. That's when kids write up kids for doing something good. I mean, we always know about the others, so, again, we're focusing on the academics, like I said, there's so many person who's coming back here, so, yeah.
Well, I don't know what the survey is about.
Yes.
Are, are we, you're obviously in the pledge of reason, are you going to be struggling with the board, and how, how should I interview you, can I help you?
Whatever you would like us to do, we, we'll be glad to.
If you have a question, if I'd like to know, if I like, oh, you know, the response rates, guys, it's...
Oh, you know, I mean, yeah, parents and staff is really good, kids, not so much, so, we talked about that, we actually are anticipating to do another one, just for the kids.
For bullying.
Yeah, for bullying.
I really take it out, did you know, you see the news, bullying issue?
Yeah.
Uh, we, when we're in the National Bullying Awareness Month, we took a reading, so remember, see our village boards, these are coming, these are posters of kids waiting in their fax classes. Uh, we've got a program that all of the guidance counselors in the snakes are reading, uh, mojo, mojo of anti-bullying, so that we're all speaking the same language, trying to get everybody out of the same, hey. Is we figured out, is you can use many detentions, you want to, but it's all about re-educating people and better choices. And that's, that's where we're putting our money this year, our time, our investment is going into that, because we try to help detention, try to mediation, try to don't do that. And our other program that we mentioned before, uh, we have a backpack program that they are having in the high school. Right now, we have, uh, a family, which is a Los, Spring Los Angeles family, church for...
Wellsbury.
Wellsbury, yes. They have been friends with us, they started out the year giving us backpacks full of school supplies, then they gave us more backpacks, they collect food for us, we're collecting foods on the weekends. We have kids, we send home with extra food to get them through their weekend. And then over Thanksgiving, we have something with like five days, these are kids that, it's a gradual attention, they maybe struggle on the weekends, they depend on our free breakfast and lunch here. So we adopted this program, talking to Mr. K, Julie Gracey, working that as well. So, we're learning to read and act with this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all, very much, this is one presentation, we're gonna see some of the great things going on here. At this time, uh, for the next presentation of the evening, Paul, I understand you have a...
My duty is your eleven minutes. Would you like to stand, that's okay, right here?
I can call right there, do you want the lights just?
My, my lights now.
No, it's on, I think it's... First of all, I want to thank the Board of Education for having me over here to present some of the good things that are going on in athletics. Uh, I get a chance, a lot of boys here are going here to kind of highlight what's going on in my department, my area, so I do appreciate that opportunity to talk, and, uh, some of the good things that are going on in athletics, Central Square. Uh, I'd like to start just with a quick overview of, of what the, what the makeup of our athletic teams are here at Central Square. We have twenty-eight total varsity programs here, or teams, here at Central Square, fifteen JV, twenty-one modified, based on sixty-four total teams that we have at Central Square. Some of the coaches, thirty-six are varsity, eighteen JV, twenty-nine modified, for total team three coaches. So we have eight coaches here, the majority of them, I would say, are also teachers here in the school, so they're still self-dealing, and, uh, doing a nice job, because they're coming in quick, in those extra hours. Participation report, um, every year, I will post this on the website, there are more detailed available. This is participation of Central Square students, seven, grade seven through twelve, uh, and how we put the percentage of their participation in. This fall is as updated as you get, uh, approximately one in every four students, grade seven through twelve, participating in athletics. Uh, the other numbers, I see the winner's gonna drop a little bit because of the, uh, indoor sports, and there's not as many sports that are offered, so spring goes back up as the team starts to get bigger. So these are, that's our participation, um, and recitation you can get, as I said, more details are available, if you want to go over my website, which I will highlight in a minute. Uh, and as you click on the different participation reports, you'll be able to see the percentage of girls that, uh, that collect sports, percentage of boys, uh, percentage of middle school kids, percentage of high schools. I break it down even, uh, even more than that, that's just the general likelihood. Uh, so fall two thousand four, fourteen, some highlights, things good that happened this fall for us, sexual qualifier, uh, girls after qualified for sexual for the first time in many, many years, I'd like to say probably seven or eight years, for the first time they qualified. Girls tennis, cross-country, boys and girls gymnastics, and boys golf, all, uh, qualified for sexual sex. Uh, we had two teams qualified for the sexual finals, in a class A volleyball, with boys and girls, playing, there were sexual runners-up, all, all this year's have a good, uh, grade count, I think that. And the scholar athlete team that Mr. Menard highlighted earlier, uh, there's two that are missing there, I'm sure Mr. Chris is wondering where gymnastics works, they're not doing very well, and, uh, so is boys soccer. So every single team, ten percent, uh, were scholar athletes, here at Central Square, we're gonna aim to accomplish that. What I wanted to do is kind of highlight a little bit about, when I talk to my coaches, the message that I'm giving to them, uh, every single season, for the fall, winter, and spring, I do sit down and, or I bring my coaches' hands, and he, he have me, and I go over a variety of different things, what to expect. There's a lot that goes into coaching, going out, and access, no, there's a lot that, that's behind it, and there's a lot of things that we talk about. And I, I modify this, uh, from season to season, but the first thing that we do talk about is the athletic vision and mission, I think that we need to have a good vision and mission for what we want at our athletics to go. Uh, this is available on the website as well, in our, in my coaches' handbook, uh, I'm not gonna sit there and read them from the other, I'll read number nine, but I think that's the one I, I wanna highlight the most. To give students an early understanding that participation in athletics is a privilege, and it carries a variety of responsibilities. I think that we're trying to teach these kids to read athletics, is responsibility. Uh, you'll notice one through nine are not really anything in there, that's talking about wins and losses. Um, number seven, beat the earth, competition's probably the closest, but we're not talking a lot about wins and losses. Yeah, at the, at the varsity level, uh, when I talk to coaches, we do emphasize that a little bit more than we do with the modified JV level, uh, but ultimately, what we're really trying to do is we're teaching like lessons for athletics. Responsibility, uh, developing expectations, fully giving accountable, now teaching them about timeliness, so there's a lot that goes into athletics, not really about, you know, the process. I share this philosophy with my coaches, it's, I wrote it, I read it, uh, an effective athletic program can be the backbone of the entire district and community as a whole. Sports not only keeps participants valuable, like lessons, but they also help to establish student pride, and school and the community together, the plan, inter-school, the athletics are a great motivator. And I think with some of these kids, it is a great motivator, that's why some of them do well in school, why they want to excel in school, because they're held accountable by their, their coaches, they want to get on that field. We have an academic eligibility policy that holds kids accountable for flash, they're students first, and then they're athletic. And I think that's something that all, all of my coaches here, I consistently face this from me, and I think that we live that. Some of my coaches have expectations that I'm not gonna help, I'll fly through these a little bit. So this is what they hear from me, uh, I'll read them quickly, if you can't see them. Be prepared and organized in everything you do, be part of a role model, demonstrate an effective communication skills, and that's a stakeholder, community, parents, the kids, don't be afraid to ask for help. Uh, I'm a firm believer in there's talent all around us. Uh, when I coach, I usually do all my best, is practices, practice plan, mainly stealing from other people that do more than me, but don't be afraid to ask for help. I tell my business case teachers that too, get in the classroom, watch other people teach, see what they're doing, steal it, use it, if it's helping kids, use it. Uh, have a vision for where you want the program to be, and how you'll get there, end that vision with an end in mind, we talked about it like the middle school, the minister talked about, an end in mind, how are we gonna get there, how are we working to get there? Uh, this is one that, hopefully you get through me a little bit, if you know me enough, uh, be, be enthusiastic about your job, it's a game. Uh, when I present to my coaches, I'm enthusiastic about what I did, my life, what I did, I hope to be that the coaches are able to do that with their kids as well, because I think it runs off, I had to take the picture. Establish expectations, hold students accountable, uh, we have team contracts, we have a purple card, we have different things that it takes to be part of an athletic team, right? It's not, it, it's not a right to be part of an athletic team, it's a privilege, and I think that we treat it as such. Uh, be flexible when situations arise, model work ethic, instill it in your players, identify teachable moments, capitalize on it. I've had this question from people in the past, how do you evaluate, how do you evaluate coaches? A lot of times I'll go to practices, when I get there, and I will watch if they are identifying moments where they, I can stop right before I get to teach from that moment, being a teacher. I talk a lot about being a teacher first, all my coaches, especially my best coaches, are teachers, they're teachers first, and they're teachers first, and then they're... So if a man, they're able to teach, anything is very important. Uh, look apart, this is one for me, uh, you develop a lot, a lot of work foundation on the presentation, the line was going, I'm gonna look apart. Decision-making, they will here, see this slide, just a more, a variety of the slides every single time. Uh, always make decisions in the best interest of the kids, they're making decisions in the best interest of the kids, you can't be wrong.